My leadership.
All this sternship, man.
Remove my background.
Thanks. Adam, I already got my mic on, so. Just to keep calling and checking.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock, we'll get this regular meeting of council to order. Councilman Tim Myers, please lead us in prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we gather here tonight with grateful hearts, humbled by the courage and dedication of the men and women who have served our country in uniform. Today, as we observe Veterans Day, we pause to honor our veterans who have answered the call of duty with bravery and sacrifice. Lord, we thank you for these heroes, for their willingness to defend our very freedom that we are demonstrating here tonight. We ask for your blessings on them, that they may find peace and purpose and support in their communities. Comfort those who bear the wounds of war, both visible and unseen, and hold close their families who have endured so much separation, worry, and loss. Help us, Lord, to remember that our freedom was won with the cost and is never to be taken granted of, or the sacrifices that they've made on our behalf. May we always be mindful of our duty, their service to those who have served us, to care for them, respect them, and honor their legacy, and ensuring their unity and peace. As we work tonight, may we, this council be guided by a sense of responsibility and gratitude towards what they have given so much for. May God bless America, the state of Ohio, and the city of Fairfield. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Myers. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Brill?
Councilmember Bessel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus?
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Take a motion to excuse Councilmembers Paulus and Brill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmembers Brill and Paulus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Any agenda modifications? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as written. Any request for executive session this evening?
Yes, there is. To consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, and negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session for the reasons stated by the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an executive session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bessel?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes. I don't believe we have any special presentations this evening. Let's open it up for citizen comments. Any citizens this evening want to come up? You have five minutes to address council. When you get up, please state your name and address. No citizen comments. Council reports.
Sir, reach to the left.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I've got a few items here. First of all, Fairfield's Third Annual Discard Day, that happened back in October 19th. It's unbelievable what a success this is. It yielded eighty-one thousand pounds of recyclables and waste. Full truckloads were donated to Goodwill and Habitat for Humanity. Five huge bags of prescription drugs were reclaimed and disposed of properly. Public Works was an integral part of the whole process, along with shipping fifteen cubic yards of clothing to Matthew Ministries. Over nine hundred cars came through the lines at the Fairfield Aquatic Center. I know I got a few calls that some of the lines were a little bit long and congested, and we're always working on that, but thanks to Public Works for taking the lead on a very successful event. Second, Festival of Lights, if you can imagine this, will be held Saturday, November 23rd already, and it features a parade, tree lighting, fireworks at Village Green. Check the city website. If you haven't been through this, it's phenomenal. It's a great, a great event and a great program. And then the winter edition to Fairfield Flyers should be in the mailboxes the week of Thanksgiving. I have, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have one item also. I want to point attention out to October 31st, Halloween. The Hamilton Journal did a really nice job, and this city spent a tremendous amount of time, effort, and what I think is thoughtfulness, in the marijuana issue, which came, it was passed by the state over a year ago, but we really took a thoughtful approach to making sure that we did this the right way, and I'm glad we did. Some of these statistics, especially from Children's Hospital and so forth, was also pointed out and showing that just some of the accidental uses of gummy bears and all kinds of different marijuana-type products have really made a negative impact in a way. So us taking a very thoughtful approach on this, I think, is the right thing to do, and I, again, commend this council for coming together and really compromising all the way through, so. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well said, sir. Much appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the Festival of Lights this weekend, the parade is. I know last year, I was looking through the minutes from our meeting immediately after the Festival of Lights last year, and I know Councilmember Meyer brought it up, that he wanted two lines for the beer booth. Was that made, or did we make that happen this year? We just wanted to make sure there was two lines for the beer booth.
It was crazy last year.
It was very hard for both of us to get a beer, so we're worried about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Councilman Davidson, for taking care of me, as always. Always taking care of me.
Looking out for the hydration of Fairfield's. Ma'am?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do have a quick update. The Gray Road Water Main Replacement Project continues to go well. The water main replacement has been complete. You'd like to hear that when you.
Absolutely.
And contractors are currently on water main testing and service. The hydrant connection, so the project is currently on schedule.
Great project. Sounds great.
Of course, thank you. Just one quick note, that the playground and parking lot at Harbin Park will finally be finished this weekend. Some minor construction will continue to finish up the splash pad, which everybody is very excited about for next summer.
Definitely looking forward to that one. I actually, from a council perspective, on the fourth ward, I wanted to have a quick announcement, the update around the roundabout at Seward and Tyler'sville Roundabout is open to traffic, a little ahead of schedule. Always good to hear. Also, Prouse Construction is installing sidewalks on Route Four with ARPA funding from the county, and will continue working this year as long as weather permits. Thank you, Ben, for that update. Okay, I think we're finished with council reports. Public hearing. Whispering Hill PUD Joint Public Hearing will now start. We will now open the joint public hearing. Madam Clerk, roll call of Planning Commission. Of course, welcome to our Planning Commission. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Commissioner Medler? Commissioner O'Brien? Commissioner Hassler? Commissioner Lepsky? Commissioner Davidson? Commissioner Myers? Commissioner Robertson?
Hearing that motion and second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, at this point, we'll turn the hearing over to Planning Manager Erin Lynn.
First, if we could just have the clerk council read the public hearing notice.
Oh, my apologies. Sorry about that.
Do the record? Then we'll get started.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the meeting notice?
All property owners and citizens of Fairfield, Ohio, are hereby notified that a joint public hearing between the Planning Commission and City Council has been scheduled for seven o'clock PM on Monday, November 11th, 2024, at the Fairfield Municipal Building at 5350 Pleasant Avenue, Fairfield, Ohio, 45014. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding the submission of a concept plan for a planned unit development, PUD, for the construction of sixty-eight owner-occupied paired villas on the former Benzinger Estates PUD site located on parcel ID A0700017000109. Parties that wish to review the application may do so by visiting the Development Services Department located at the Fairfield Municipal Building, or on the Development Services page on the city website at www.fairfield-city.org-devservices. Questions may be directed to the department by telephone at 513-867-5345, or via email at development@fairfieldoh.gov. The department is open Monday through Friday between the hours of eight o'clock AM and five o'clock PM.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. As was just discussed, the public hearing tonight is to request a modification to the existing Benzinger Estates Plan Unit Development. The concept plan for the Benzinger Estates was approved three years ago in 2021. The developer at this time has decided to not move forward with his project, and he would like to enter into a contract with the applicant, which is MI Homes, to move forward once, if this gets favorable approval from City Council. And I kind of want to explain to you why we are here tonight. It's because our zoning code states that if there's a substantial change to an existing PUD, that it needs to come back for a concept development plan review, so it's basically starting all over again. The amendment that are the revisions that they're requesting consist of a slight increase in density, a change in the style of the housing, and there's minimal changes to the site layout. So individually, those things wouldn't rise to the level of a major modification, but if you add them all together, we felt as staff that it did meet that threshold, and that's why we are here tonight. I always kind of show this slide just to let the audience know how a PUD works. Basically, it's a two-step process. There's the concept development plan, again, that's what we're doing here tonight, and then there's a final development plan. The concept is very generalized, it's conceptualized. It basically tells you what the use is, what the layout is, what the lots look out, and then the final is very specific, very detailed-oriented, down to exactly what the buildings are going to look like, what landscaping is going to be installed. So if they do get a favorable vote from you all, then they will come back at a later date with the final development plan approval. You've seen some of these slides before, three years ago, but I'm sure you probably don't remember them, so I'm just going to kind of go over them briefly just to set the tone. The surrounding properties are a mixture of residential, office, and commercial, so to the north, as is at the very top of the slide, is a Twin Lakes Development of Wildwood, is a townhome development. To the south, you see the Mercy Mixed Use PUD, that was approved by you all in 2022, with the intention of knowing this was going to be built out in the future, not, so that there's no delay in the project, it's just it was to secure for the future. That was really a project that would comprise of a medical office building for Mercy, some retail, and then there was that restaurant we had all talked about. And then, of course, to the east is the hospital, and then to the west is the Turtle Creek subdivision across the street from South Gilmore, which was probably a subdivision, traditional subdivision built in the 1970s, and then you can kind of see surrounding the property, we have the Cincinnati Financial and that large undeveloped property, Catty Corner from the site.
Hey, Erin, question. That Mercy PUD, that was exciting. Are they waiting on this other development to come through to start breaking ground on that? Do you know, is there any indication there?
You know, I'm going to have to defer that to Greg Kathman. My understanding was that this was planned out for maybe at least five years in the future. They acquired this property from Joe Schwartz, who currently owns the whole property, so I think they wanted to have, before they purchased the property, they wanted to have a plan approved of what they wanted to do and set in place. So if there's anything else that conversation you've heard since then.
They, they still have plans to move forward with the project. The key for them is the medical office component. Of course, Mercy's a large corporation, trying to compete for resources, and a large corporation sometimes takes some time, but they, I know the local leadership is still intent on doing the project soon.
Good. Thank you.
Again, these are just some photos of the site. As you know, this is not a flat site. It's got some rolling hills. The highest point kind of goes from east to west, to the highest point at the hospital. So by looking at this, you can already probably guess that there's going to be a lot of earth-moving work and a lot of cost to develop the site for anything, whatever ends up going there. There's a few things from the Fairfield Forward Comprehensive Plan that we typically like to show. This is the land use map. This is taken from the actual, the small area of the Mac-Gilmore Small Area. If you remember, this site was originally zoned B1 for office and institution. We have seen, obviously, the office market change in the last few years. The decline in the standalone office has gone away with the increase of the work from home. We do know that the current property owner has reached out to Mercy Hospital on multiple occasions to see if they would pick up the entire site. The large, the corporation of Mercy decided that that was something they did not want to pursue. So they did try to sell it to them, and they weren't interested. I did want to point out a goal from Fairfield Forward, talking about the need for alternative housing within the city. It states, "Encourage a range of housing choices and types that satisfy market demand and let residents continue to live in Fairfield across different lifecycle stages for current and future residents." So this came up in 2021, and you all ultimately decided when the zoning was changed from B1 to PUD, that residential was acceptable at this location. This is the zoning map, so again, it falls in with the land uses. You got the B1 for the office, the PUD, and then the residential. What I want to talk about here is the density of the residential. The Twin Lakes, that's R4, so at the time this was developed, they could have up to ten units per acre. The R1 across the street at Turtle Creek is 3.11 dwelling units per acre, and the subject site is 3.78 dwelling units per acre. And another goal I want to touch on from the comprehensive plan, that's actually specific to this corridor, said, "Upscale, higher-density housing may be considered as a transitional land use between the more intensive corridor uses and the single-family residential development." We as staff feel that this proposal that you'll see appears to be a good transition and a good buffer for that. So here is the Benzinger Estate PUD. So I'm going to talk about this, and I'm going to talk about the proposed Whispering Hill, just to get you orientated. North is at the top, and then obviously, south is at the bottom. So I'm going to kind of tell you what's different and what's similar to these two developments. The Benzinger Estates, they are originally proposed twenty-four patio homes, which you see in orange, and then forty paired villas, which are in purple, for a total of sixty-four units. The Whispering Hills is proposing sixty-eight paired villas, so you have an increase in four units altogether. You can see they've retained the same street pattern, so it's very similar. The only thing that's different is the interior cul-de-sac, which they replaced with a private driveway that would lead to four homes. The entrance to the site is, okay, remains the same as well. It's located up here, the farther north, because that has the best site distance visibility, as you know, when you get from Mac Road and you head north, it kind of goes down a hill and then back up, so that was key in having that curb cut at that location for safety. The paired villas are very similar, and I'll show you that in the next slide. They're the side-by-side with the property line going down the middle. Each unit on both projects were proposed to be owner-occupied and on their own property. The minimum lot size for the Benzinger was 4,500 square feet, and the minimum lot size for Whispering Hills is 5,000 square feet. Both have an HOA that were proposed to take care of the site. The open space, Benzinger had about 5.7 acres, Whispering Hills has about seven acres of open space that will be preserved. They both contain that buffer that would be around, there's a 25-foot buffer around all sides of the development, except along the roadway here. This is probably got a little bit more than the 25 feet. And then they both retain the retention pond, and then the walking trail that connects from the entrance to the cul-de-sac. What you want to do, what I wanted to point out is, at the cul-de-sac here, they did put in a sidewalk, so you could get from this section of the development to South Gilmore Road without having to walk all the way down here to get there. So that was a nice addition. So this, again, is the Whispering Hill. This is what the lots would look like, so each one is on their own separate lot. They have their own separate driveways. The lot line goes right down the middle, and I think that just kind of basically shows you what the lots are going to look like, which I think you've already knew. What I really wanted to talk about on this slide is, there is some transportation issues and improvements. As you know, we are currently putting in a second-through road going southbound on on South Gilmore Road that will be completed by the, substantially completed by the end of the year, hope to help alleviate with the traffic. There were concerns raised at the original public hearing in 2021 that kind of addressed the amount of traffic on this portion of the roadway, as well as the location of the access into the development and site visibility. In response to those concerns, our city engineer had some recommendations to improve the safety of the area. They were, one was putting, making sure the main road that's in the subdivision is elevated higher than the South Gilmore, just to have the site visibility, putting up signs, letting drivers know that, hey, there's a streak coming up. You see these all the time where it says, hey, Whispering Hills Drive, in a street, little, you know what I'm talking about, I'm not good with charades, but with a little arrow. And then they recommended a southbound left-turn lane into the development. The pavement is already there with the construction of this roadway improvement, so the developer would be required for striping it. The remaining slides are just some proposed elevations of what the development would look like. You can see, again, these are the side-by-side paired villas. Each unit will be offset. The home sizes range between 1,500 to 3,200 square feet, depending on the layout, and they do come with an optional bonus, second floor. Basements are not proposed, but staff is encouraging them to have them as an optional feature, especially on the ones that are on the hillside, because they would make for a great walkout basement. Here's another one. Again, this, you can see the offset, a little bit better in this picture. All the choices of your exterior would be either a brick or a stone base, and then different types of siding for the remainder of the, remainder of the building or the house. And then this is just a third one, so there's really three different styles that you can choose from, and then you can have different styles on one, one building. And then, again, tonight's a public hearing. This Wednesday, in this room, we will have the Planning Commission meeting at six o'clock. That's where we get into the details and talk a little bit more about the project, and then the second reading, November 25th, followed by the third reading, December 9th. There's a little asterisk there, that means if these dates could be delayed, if there's the need for a second Planning Commission meeting. But if not, this is how we anticipate the review and the approval process to follow. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, the applicant, MI Homes, is here, and they can talk to you a little bit about their project.
How do you make a south, how do you make a left out of there? Is there going to be a separate lane for that?
I would imagine that there would, they would require, Public Works, I would imagine, would require a left-turn lane in and a left-turn lane out.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
The council's got a sitting back. Go back to that one. It's by the stop, it's not a cul-de-sac anymore. Who maintains that driveway? Is that a mutual aid thing? Is that a driveway? What is that?
I would anticipate that is the HOA, but we can have the applicant answer that question when they come up here. I'm going to leave it on this slide, just because it's got the floor plan, so if you have any desire to move it, let me know, or up and down.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Jason Brown with MI Homes. I'm here with Terry Corner with Bear Becker. For what it's worth, we're both proud Fairfield High School alumni from a few years back. Happy to be back in Fairfield. As Erin mentioned, we're proposing sixty-eight homes on the site, again, building our villa products geared mainly toward the empty nester buyer. Also, we'll appeal to someone who likes the low maintenance and the livability of the product and the community, proximity to the hospital and other businesses in the area. We'll certainly draw professionals who work there as well. The HOA for the community would be managed and maintained by a professional management company. We use Stonegate Properties exclusively. They handle all the maintenance, both of landscaping, snow removal, mulch and beds, et cetera, of the property, grass cutting. Devi, to your question, Ms. Pennington, the shared driveway there would be maintained by the HOA, so both for snow removal as well as replacement value twenty years down the road. That's a shared cost by the HOA. As Erin mentioned, homes would range two to four bedrooms, square footages, 1,500 to 3,200 square feet. If approved, we would like to start site development likely mid-2025 of next year, and then have a model home constructed for sales about this time next year. So I know a lot of people want to see what price of the homes, what are they going to sell for, and so that's always a tough question for me to answer, especially if, you know, 2001 and 2008, 2020 have taught us anything. It's a, it's a moving. It's a, it's a moving target, but if we were sitting here today, we think the, the sale price that we would go to market with is in the upper 300s to start and could push into the upper 400s. Again, that's, will be determined here a year from now when we go to market. But that's where we think the homes will end up being. Thanks to Erin and Greg for staff comments and the report. We've met with them several times to hone in on what we'd like to do here regarding basements. As Erin mentioned, yes, this will be a slab product, probably for about 60% of the site. We think we can have a slab opportunity and then probably 20 to 25 of those. There'll be some topography involved and will make for a nice walkout finished basement opportunity. So those options will be available to the buyers. One other thing that was mentioned in the staff report, and this may be for later, but along the north property line, I think there was a request in there. It may have been from engineering, but a future water line connectivity of a 10 foot wide easement. We're, we're not opposed to working with the city to facilitate that future water line, but we think there might be a better place for it. Again, we'd like to preserve and plan to preserve the trees along that northern border. So providing an easement for future construction in there seems like we might be able to do that with a water line through our street and then provide a more perpendicular attachment for the folks in Twin Lakes. So as long as staff and engineering is open to that, we'd like to pursue that in the future. I think those were the main things that we wanted to mention. We're building this product several places, but most notably in Fairfield Township at Timber Hill off the bypass. So you can go look, feel, see it out there next to Rinshler. Again, we've gotten, 75% of our buyers have kind of fallen into who we think we're targeting, the empty nesters, the moved downs. We're also seeing some young professionals as well as those in transition of life. So it could be a divorcee who wants to stay in the schools. But generally, we're hitting our target market of who we think we're going to sell to. I think that's it for me. I know, you know, we've talked to some of the neighbors who are concerned about stormwater drainage. And again, Terry's here with Bear Becker can answer some of those. But our intent is to leave as much of the site, existing trees, et cetera, as it is. Obviously, we'll need to get in there and manage and improve the drainage better than it is today. So other than that, we appreciate the opportunity and thank you for your time this evening and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jason, do you think noise is going to be a complaint or an issue here? That's a heavy, heavily trafficked area there.
It's certainly a concern of ours, you know, traffic. We've, we've studied that intersection and what the road improvements have been and allowing space to both turn and left into the future community as well as left out. So it is heavily trafficked. I think the improvements that you're doing with the road are going to help slow down traffic a little bit, narrow through there. But it is, it is what it is. It's great location. And sometimes with the great location, there are offsets and trade offs with that. But we're hoping to, again, maintain as much of the foliage along Gilmore as possible. We think that'll soften some of it. And then I think, again, as mentioned in the staff report, the homes that are abutting Gilmore there will have additional landscaping and trees to buffer those, both inside and outside the subdivision.
The area here in the front, there's no water in there, but the one in the back is not. Is that for overflow or?
It is, and Terry can speak to that a little bit more. But, you know, generally speaking, MI, we like to have all of our basins to have water in them. Be a wet basin, put a fountain in there with a light. We know we can do that on the front. I don't think we can facilitate that on the back or we haven't gone to the full engineering and stormwater management calculations to ensure that we can or cannot. So for now, that would be a dry temporary, hold the water and then release it slower than it's coming out today to, again, help manage that stormwater.
Question for Ben, man, the neighborhood that's across the street from South Gilmore, up closer to the church, the intersection of Mack Road. Are they allowed to left turn and go north on South Gilmore from that street? I don't recall.
From Flag?
Yes, they are. So they can left turn and right turn out of Flag?
That's right.
Jason, you said that HOA will do all the snow removal too, is it?
They will, yes.
You realize how good our city is on snow removal?
Well, I'm accounting, I'm accounting on that excellent Public Works to take care of all the streets. We'll take care of the driveways and the walks.
Oh, driveway and walks?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
You'll still do the streets. We'll, we'll take care of the walkability of the neighborhood and the paths and the.
The street, the street, the street will be a public street. So the city will provide the normal services that it would on a public street, just not the walks and the driveways that the HOA will handle.
That's a great service. That's great.
And Jason, just to confirm one more time, the landscaping will be part of the HOA? The grass will be up kept with the HOA standards for the residents? It will be a, a membership essentially?
Yeah, that's part of what you're signing up for there. Again, with our demographic and who we're targeting, there'll be an HOA fee that spells out in great detail kind of what that covers. That includes some remulching each end of the season, fertilizing the yard, both mows and cuts as well.
Great.
Jason, do you have an idea what the HOA fee would be?
We haven't fully calculated, but normally it comes in somewhere between $180, $200 a month. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Anybody from the Planning Commission have any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up to the audience for any kind of questions or comments. Okay, great. Hearing none, we'll officially close the public hearing. Moving on to the approval of minutes, any corrections, additions or deletions of the minutes for October 28, 2024? Hearing none, they will stand as approved as written. Moving on to old business. Councilman Matt Davidson, Development Services.
Thank you. I have an ordinance amending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, Section 1130.01B2. The city of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map by approving the concept plan for Whispering Hill, planned unit development, unit development. I'm holding that as a second reading pending Planning Commission approval. And second, do you want me to read it before you talk about it? The second one? All right. Second, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a restricted fund agreement with the Fairfield Community Foundation to establish a Fairfield Public Art Fund for public mural and sculpture installation and maintenance. Authorize a grant in the amount of $750,000 to be made. $75,000 to be made to the fund for establishing a mural program and piloting two murals in the town city, town center and declaring an emergency. That's the second reading, move to suspend the second, third, move to suspend the third reading. That's what I was asking, if there was, if you were going to do that before I read it or if you were going to wait until after I read it. But that was the second reading and as of now, I'll move, suspend the second, third rea, or the, move to third reading.
We can talk about it before adoption.
You need a second for that?
Yeah.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I'll move to adopt and then we'll ask for comments.
Okay. We have a second for adoption?
I'll second the adoption.
We have a second, all in favor?
No.
Oh, excuse me, questions for council? Questions for audience? Okay, Nathaniel, if you would like to proceed, sorry. Yeah.
This will work well. Could I have the slides placed before? All right, well, I'll start. Is that the mural? That's the beautiful mural. Now, I guess I'll talk without slides for a second. I don't, I'm going to need it for the second round though, but. Good evening, I just wanted to share a few comments on murals. There were questions at the last council meeting. I did meet individually with several members, but wanted to provide an update for the entire group. As you recall, last winter, the city contracted with Design Local Planning Firm to work on a strategy, placemaking strategy for our town center. This area around Pleasant and Nilis. And the goal there is really to create a sense of place for our central business district in an effort to increase the vibrancy and drive attention and activity to the businesses and destinations in this area. And the strategy had a number of recommendations, among them wayfinding and signage, enhanced connectivity, public art, infill development, amongst some other ideas. Staff felt there were some low hanging fruit items that we could advance and immediately explore, including signage to identify the town center and also the installation of murals. Murals come in a lot of shapes and sizes. I wish you could see some on the screen right now. There's examples all throughout our region. And you may be familiar with seeing, you know, murals pop up, you know, years ago in more older urban places in Cincinnati and places like that. Oh, there we go. But now you're really seeing them become prevalent throughout suburban areas and also even brand new developments. Here are some examples throughout the region. Loveland Liberty Center even has a few that are interactive, meant to take a selfie or something like that. Oxford painted recently some murals on either side of an alley, you know, created an attraction out of what was the place where people didn't necessarily want to go before. Kenwood Town Center has done some, Voice of America has done some through bulk of kind of metro parks. Hamilton has a program and they even beyond walls, Hamilton has painted some electrical boxes. The one on the screen is in Linen Wool and Pleasant Avenue across from St. Anne or near St. Anne. You may have seen that one. So they come in a lot of different shapes and sizes. You know, as we have looked at mural programs in other communities, there is a common practice to use a committee structure to select the mural artists and design. The committee would issue a call to artists, ultimately select three to four artists who would do, submit designs to be considered for selection of the final design. We envision a committee for Fairfield for each of our murals. It would include representatives from the city, from the Cultural Arts Advisory Commission, from the Community Foundation, from the building ownership, as well as expertise from the graphics art, graphic art community. And I'd imagine that from the people, people, among the people in this room, there are varied opinions on which of these murals on the screen we like or dislike. And that's really the nature of art. The goal of the committee is to make sure we have a quality piece of art, something that translates well from a piece of paper to a wall and reflects positively on Fairfield. There are several mural locations that were recommended in the placemaking strategy. You see a few of them on the screen here. Most of those are located within the northeast quadrant of the town center. And there's one on YMCA shown as well. We've not had firm conversations with all these building owners. We've talked to a few of them. We think there is preliminary interest, but obviously they're private property, so we need to come to agreement with those property owners. And as we've worked through the, the mural program, investigated it, an ideal partner has come forward with the Fairfield Community Foundation. They have experience with mural programs through the Hamilton affiliation, the Streets Parks Program in Hamilton. Also, they believe that there would be interest from private donors towards public art. So the idea is to establish a fund which would allow a vehicle for private donors in the community to donate towards the installation and long-term maintenance of murals so that there's a public and private participation here. So tonight, we're authorized, are asking for authorization to create that fund and provide a $75,000 grant, which would allow us to pilot two murals in the town center next year. Are there any questions?
This is really no different, maybe it is. We've got a mural in, in Fairfield already at the post office, right?
That's correct, yes.
The entire post office is, is a mural, which has worked out very well, I, I think. I don't know. I guess my question is, is how do you maintain these and how much cost is there to maintaining it?
Sure. So that, that's a big question and the, it's interesting you bring up the post office because that's one that, you know, it was installed about 20 years ago and it's not as bright and vibrant as it once was. And we think that through this fund, you know, in a few years, we might want to do something to refresh that, you know, make it, you know, continue to shine. There, you know, the idea is that you would have a few funds, you know, within the, the fund so that if there was, you know, paint that was chipping or something, we could help supplement that to the building owner. The other thing to remember is that unlike some public improvements, this isn't necessarily something, you know, the post office is a little unique and that it has been there a long time, but it's possible that we have a mural in place for 15 years and then a building gets renovated or there's a redevelopment or something. And so they may not last forever. You kind of think about like an art gallery or something, things may change. But the idea is that this fund would help supplement that. You do want to be strategic in the properties that you're selecting and make sure that there's not any potential water damage that, and that the buildings aren't maintained. If you have water coming through the wall or leaking roof or something at the parapet or something, then they can obviously wear out quickly, so, and damage caused there. So that's part of our idea to work with a consultant and make sure that we're asking those questions upfront, so we're not putting them on a wall that's not going to be productive.
Nathaniel, would you mind sharing with everyone else? Because I'm one of the people, obviously, that had an issue with this or wanted some clarification on what the potential mural would be, say, on the Chase Bank. I just thought this was really.
Sure. This is a fun one and, you know, to be honest, we haven't had, been able to engage with Chase yet. But the consultant in the placemaking strategy came up with a concept for the Pleasant Avenue or the Nilis Road facade of Chase. If you look at the building, there's a modern addition on it. And about the first story and a half, it's just a blank wall. And that building was originally Sims Tavern. It's, you know, our main historic building at the, the town center. And so the consultant came up with two historic concepts. One would be to put an image of a, an old rail car, interurban car that used to go up and down Pleasant from Cincinnati or a, or cutaway that, that would look like you were actually looking into Sims Tavern 100 years ago and see people enjoying the restaurant. So there's a couple of fun concepts. That mural potentially, we could not do a larger call to artists, but have an, an artist design two concepts and have the community vote, something like that. But that'd be a smaller one, but be kind of a fun historical one.
Nathaniel, and I was the other one that had question. You want to elaborate on the why? Tell them a little bit about that.
Sure. So the Y has a very large wall at the end of Wessel, at, at Byberry and on the end of the gym. There, the Y has been talking for a couple of years with some community members about potentially putting a mural on that wall, but that would include some fundraising. And so we thought that might be a good potential partner up at that.
I mean, I just, I feel like I need persuaded a little bit more that this is a good use of taxpayer money that we're just going to go out to private locations and, and paint on their walls. What, where's the benefit in this of use of taxpayer money when we're spending a lot of money on other projects that are necessary? We have a lot of other projects that need done. And we still need sidewalks in places that there's no sidewalks. There's, there's things that I've been asking about for four years on council. Is $75,000 a good use of taxpayer money? That's why we're up here, that's our job. I, I just, I feel like because other cities do it, isn't really a, an explanation I wanted to hear.
Sure, I, I think that's a fair question. You know, I, as a, as a planner and as an economic development person, I do believe that public art does drive activity and does create, what's the word I want, kind of an ambiance or attraction to a place. We're trying to make the town center a more interesting place where people want to come, visit, hang out, drive family members here when they're visiting the town, visit the businesses. So we're trying to make it more aesthetically interesting. And also by providing that community input, by providing a more pride of place at the same time.
I, I could add a little bit to that as well. You know, ultimately, that is a decision of this body on whether or not a funding to support a program is going to be put in place. What I'll add is, you know, for the last two years, we've gathered as a, as a group to determine what our primary focus is going to be for the upcoming year. Both years have generated significant interest around town center revitalization and town center, you know, identity. So when, when we look at those types of projects as to how we can, you know, build that identity of what is Fairfield and figure out ways to engage and enhance what is the town center, we look at ways that give you something to talk about if you're going to come visit, give you a reason to want to be a part or be present in the area. Th- this is a way to help engage you in that manner. It, it, it's a reason to visit. It's a reason to want to continue to either patronize or invest in, in the town center and be part of what, you know, the future of the town center area is. Ultimately, it's, it's a decision of the governing body, but what, what I feel staff has been asked to do is, is look at new ways to identify Fairfield as a, a community of choice. And, and this is one of those options for. And, and this is one of those options for city council to decide whether or not you agree that this could help engage and enhance what we currently offer.
I want to, I want to thank Councilman Vessel for pointing this out in the prior meeting and kind of asking the right questions. I thought it was very thoughtful and it's, it's good conversation. And then Mr. Timmer, I don't disagree with what you and the staff was charged to do and you're doing an outstanding job. My only comment on this, I do think the mural through the post office adds tremendous value because it's a historical picture, if you want to call it that. My only question is, this point in time, I think it's, the cart is before the horse. We haven't fully developed a lot of this particular area yet. We're still in the work, it's still a work in process. We're trying to make progress, we're working on that. I think we're a little bit early on that. For that reason, I'm questioning it tonight.
Nathaniel, can you help us understand where you came up with the $75,000? Is that kind of the market rate? I don't think I'm educated enough in mural fundings to, to say that that would fund to. Where did we come up with that figure?
Sure. A couple of things. So we, with the funds, we hope to do, to bring on a consultant to help us build a structure for your mural program, which would be about 10% of the cost, which would be putting together guidelines and a process for that committee, working with the committee moving forward to select murals. So that's some of the upfront cost to establish a program. And then each mural would vary in cost depending on how large it is, quite simply. So if we did a mural on the YMCA, it's a very large wall. It could very well be $40,000 to paint that, to buy the paint, to prime the wall, the, the costs that go into that. If we did a smaller mural like on the Chase, it could be on the lower end. So we kind of came up with a budget of 40,000 to 50,000 for next year. And the 75,000 has some, you know, buffer in there to keep in the fund for maintenance and that kind of thing as well. So, you know, we could, we could probably pilot one mural if we had, you know, if we wanted to do a lower allocation or something.
I appreciate that, that's very helpful. One thing I would probably encourage everyone to kind of think about with an open mind continues is setting up this type of, of board or body or group of individuals to make these recommendations throughout our community. I think it has a tremendous value about driving community involvement. It allows voices to be heard throughout the community on, on multiple different levels. And I think that part of this, if not, if not a willingness to approve all of it, at $75,000 for this fund, I would encourage those to take a look at, could we do a portion of that to at least get this program started? Maybe take it out to, to further fundraising opportunities, to ask for more community involvement that way. But I think there is a tremendous amount of value in, in setting up at least the initial stages to get this going because I do agree with you wholeheartedly, Scott, that this is, this is something that has started to show, it has helped our community with the post office. And I think it will continue to drive an identity in Fairfield that will continue to have involvement, involved with that, so.
Councilman Davidson, I, everything you said was what I had shared with Nathaniel. I'm not sure that this initially was the highest and best use of funds with everything that we have going on. But after talking with Nathaniel, I, I feel a higher level of comfort with at least proceeding with two murals and seeing how that goes. I don't know that I want to do five. I think it's pretty expensive and I don't, I don't know that I'm convinced it's going to drive, be that much of a talking point, that it's worth the money. But it's really not that much money in the big scheme of things. So I'm comfortable with going ahead and approving this tonight for two murals and seeing how it goes.
Is it still the 75,000 that you're asking, the two murals?
Correct. We, we could probably get closer to 50 or five or 65 if we wanted to drop that.
There's a motion on the table right now for 75,000. So we'd have to, I'd have to withdraw the motion and you'd have to amend it.
You would have to amend it just as a point of order. In order to suspend the reading, you're going to need all five of you to vote in support of that. I'm not sure that it sounds like that's on the table regardless of the amount. But you can discuss that if you want to amend the ordinance to reduce the amount. But it, it might be worth just going back and investigating how that would impact the plan with our partners that we're working with before you did that. We could, you could just leave it on the table and explore that if that's something you want to do.
What's the timeliness of this? Is this going to have, have to happen this year?
Not necessarily. It is a long process to go out, to organize a committee, to do a call to artists. You, you do a call to artists, they submit their qualifications, example of work. The committee would then choose several of them to come up with a design. They would have some time to design and it would come back. And then you have to actually choose a design, identify painters. And so the consultant that we've been talking to has basically said, we need to start right away if we want to paint by, you know, late summer of '25. But, you know, we don't, there's no deadline to have to paint next year if we want to wait.
This is not something I feel super, super strongly about one way or the other. Council's comfort level is to talk about this later or lower the amount. I am totally open to both of those options.
Hey, Leslie, the, the biggest thing, and I'm sure everybody up here, elected official gets this from the constituents, and that is, where are the restaurants? Can we get some entertainment down in the middle here? That's, that's not just a few. Can we build that out and so forth? If you're telling me that these murals are going to drive that, that there's marketing information and data that's going to help with that, I'm all in. I'm in 100%. I'd like to dip my toes in that in a smaller fashion than a full 75,000. But 75,000 is what it is, right? And from a perception standpoint, the public is going to look at this as taxpayer money that we're allocating for some paintings in the city. But we're still lacking some of the basic, I'm going to say, draws such as restaurants and entertainment in the city center that they've been clamoring for in wanting to get going. So that's my position right here is, I'm like Leslie. I'm, I'm really mixed on this. I think there's better value for $75,000. But if somebody can convince me that that 75 grand is going to bring in a nice restaurant to the center here, I'm in. Let's go. That's my opinion.
And I completely agree with that. And I think, I mean, if the YMCA were coming to us and saying, hey, would you guys be willing to donate in 10,000, 15,000 so that we can do this mural that we're going to do here at the YMCA or whatever number it was? I'd be a lot more comfortable looking at it as we already know where one's going up. We know what that number is going to be versus we're just going to put $75,000 worth of taxpayer money. And then God only knows what's going to happen next of, are we going to need more because 75,000 didn't get it done? They only got a half a mural. What else is, what the future looks like? So, I mean, that's, I'm not passionate one way or the other about it. I'm passionate about taxpayer money and I just don't feel this is a good use of it.
I mean, under no circumstances would we begin a process with funding that we did not think was sufficient. There, there's no scenario where we would end up with half of one completed. We would investigate the entire process before ever beginning and ensuring that appropriate funding was in place before a project were to get started. So that, that, that fear should not be one of primary concern because the planning process in, in the committee that Nathaniel outlined would ensure that appropriate funding is there to get you from, you know, start to complete. So just to try to alleviate that component of it, that shouldn't be a concept because that's what the structure he's laying out would prevent something from being half finished.
Nathaniel, how much funds would you need to proceed with forming the, the board? With working with the consultants? You said, what, about 5%? Is that what you, originally what you said?
About 7,500, it's about 10%, 75,000.
That would get the process started before we had to go in through and, and fund any murals or, or look at any kind of artist selection, correct?
Correct. I, I would caution just doing that alone because that would give us a structure, but no funding to implement. And I don't know if we'd want to spend those funds if we didn't want to ultimately do a mural or two.
Understood.
Nathaniel, when we met last week, you said that you have not contacted these people to see if they want one, who's paying for it. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. We've had some conversations, some casual conversations with the Rikers Square business owners. We have had a more serious conversation with the YMCA and they, because they have been talking about it for multiple years, they're very interested in it. Have not been able to reach Chase yet, so I, I think there is interest there from the building owners. But we need to confirm that and we would have an agreement with them for maintenance. And so we need to make sure they're comfortable with all those terms. And, and make sure again that their buildings and walls are, you know, properly maintained and ready to successfully take a mural.
So they would be in charge of maintaining it, it wouldn't be us necessarily?
It's, there's kind of a mixed responsibility. The, the hope would be that there'd be some money in the fund. If there was actual chipping or something, we could bring someone in and repaint. But keeping it clean would be their responsibility. Keeping moisture from getting into it would be their responsibility. And it's their, their mural. So if there was, if they needed to punch a hole in the wall or, you know, put a window in or something, they could do that or redevelop the building or something like that.
So Steve, you said there had to be a, a motion, or excuse me, a vote of five?
Yeah.
Of all of us to?
Yeah. The agenda calls for this to be a motion for, to suspend the third reading. In order to do that, it requires five members of council.
We suspended second, third readings. We're, we're at the adoption.
Yeah. Well, yeah, as far as that, then for adoption, it won't require, it's not for an emergency. So it would take four to adopt if you want to do that. If you want to table it, you can do that. I don't know where you guys are at, so.
And it's not something that has ever prevented from being brought back.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, no, I, I mean, I don't know how that signals to potential partners, but at the same time, that's why I'm kind of like, I, my thoughts are if you guys are interested in possibly doing this at some point in time, maybe tabling it, you can take it off the agenda or whatever. Or if you think you want to go forward with it now, go ahead and vote and pass it. You know, I, I don't want you to take necessary action to vote it down if that's where you guys are at. So it might be worth putting it off and investigating some options.
Then I'd like to make a motion to, you already have a motion on table, so you have to.
All withdraw on the motion?
Matt's going to withdraw his, I second that withdrawal. Is there, do you have to take a vote then?
Uh, to withdraw it? Yeah, technically.
All in favor?
All in favor to withdraw the motion?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to table this piece of legislation on the, on the murals at this time for future consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nathaniel. Much appreciated. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title only.
We have a motion and a second to read all new business by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Development Services, City Manager Timmer.
I will actually turn it back over to Nathaniel, who's going to present all three of the items under Development Services. Thank you.
All right, thank you, City Manager. Can I have the slides again? All right. Well, I'm thrilled to be here tonight to present the next item, which is the expansion of Pacific Manufacturing in Fairfield. Pacific Manufacturing Ohio is our second largest industrial employer. They have a significant manufacturing campus on Seward Road. The company is a tier one supplier to Toyota, Subaru and Honda. This map shows the company's current footprint. I've never tried to use this. Show it on the big screen? Okay. So their buildings are labeled, you know, PMO, Pacific Manufacturing Ohio. They're building one and two are their large buildings on Seward. They have stamping plants, building three at the corner of Commerce Center and Seward as their plastic plant. PMO four is the building they completed, came just a couple of years ago, came before council in 2021 for incentives. And now they are talking about a PMO five tonight, which I like because today is my fifth year anniversary with the city, so good timing. You may notice on this slide two, between PMO one and PMO four, they actually constructed a bridge over the creek to be able to connect to that site. Remember that in a second here. So again, they are looking at completing a PMO five. This is a zoom in on the site there on Quality Boulevard. It's the end of Quality up near FedEx. You see it backs up to PMO two, and so they're talking about constructing another bridge. There is an existing 50,000 square foot building on this site and they would add about 72,000 square feet to that. Here's a rendering of what that building could look, would look like. The blue outline shows essentially the existing footprint of that building. That building was just completed last year on a speculative basis. Pacific ended up buying the site and the existing building and they're using it now for storage. The addition here, 72,000 square feet, actually a little bit more than that. It includes that large high bay area, 60 foot tall. It also includes some smaller additions outside of the original 50,000 square foot footprint. This is a pretty sizable investment, $34 million in building expenses. Now there are $27 million in machinery cost. And when you factor in the cost of acquisition of the land and building, that's almost $70 million that Pacific will be investing in Fairfield. This image shows some additional views. The darker gray is generally the areas that are, that are being added on to the building. So again, a very significant, large project. When complete, Pacific's campus will encompass 950,000 square feet approximately across 60 acres. As equally impressive to this investment are the jobs and payroll numbers. Pacific will retain 860 full-time existing jobs and they'll create at least 96 new full-time positions within three years. This will bring the total payroll of $44.7 million. To facilitate the project, staff is recommending two incentives. The first is a 10-year, 100% tax abatement on the value of the new addition. This is a larger percentage than you're used to seeing, but it, the abatement only applies to the new addition, not to the existing building. So when you average those two, it's in the range of 60%, which is where you typically will see our incentives. The second incentive is a partial fee waiver that would waive city of Fairfield building permits fees that are in excess of $50,000. I just want to note that this project, you know, could have occurred at Pacific Manufacturing, Manufacturing's campus in Tennessee or another location. So we're very pleased that the company chose to expand here in Fairfield. Tonight, I'm also happy to introduce and welcome up three members of the Pacific team. Ken Yamada, the president, Takashi Ohashi, the treasurer, and Kim Hall, the assistant GM. Would you like to come forward?
Good evening, everyone. We are Pacific Manufacturing Ohio. I'm Ken Yamada.
Thank you so much for taking your time today. You're very busy, you know? Well, thank you so much.
So now we have a plan to build a new building right next to the western side of the existing building, PMO five.
We really appreciate your support for this new project. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for, for your support. Mr. Yamada is not so good at speaking English. He said, PM, I can speak in front of you. And then again, we appreciate as a representative of Pacific, including our Japanese parent company, thank you so much. This is very good opportunity for us to express our appreciation again to City of Fairfield. We started a business since 2008, sorry, 1988. But we established PMO in 2000. And then fortunately, we have a 25th anniversary this year. So this is because of your support, of course. So again, thank you so much. And at this time, we plan to expand again, PMO five. We are very honored to say additional expansion. So in 2020, we came here to express, explain our number four building and again, number five now. So I hope number six will listen, but please support again. And then thank you again for your continuous support. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being part of our, our city and being such a valuable business here. The city, from a city council standpoint, thank you so much.
Also note on that one, Pacific is pursuing state of Ohio incentives, which we expect to be approved in December and those are contingent on the project moving forward.
Nathaniel, a sixth site was mentioned. Is there plans, is there room for that that's over there or?
We're, we're always hoping that we can find more land for Pacific. So we're always talking to them about that.
Sounds great. Sounds great. Paint a mural of some more land.
Good idea. All right. And then the final thing I want to, um, share with you tonight is related to the last Development Services item. Um, and, uh, improvements on Seward Road. Um, as council will recall, um, the city partnered with Fairfield Township in twenty twenty-two to establish a joint economic development district on the east side of Seward Road, um, up near Tyler'sville, which allows the city to collect and share income tax within that portion of the township. Al-Nair Development is constructing an industrial park within the JED known as Fairfield Logistics Center. Um, two buildings have been constructed to date, um, fronting on Seward, and the company now plans to add a third building, um, towards the back of the site, um, approximately forty-four, forty, four hundred and forty-six thousand square feet. And you can see that labeled on the mapping your screen as proposed building one B. It's building three, but they call it one B. So, um, Al-Nair has identified a confidential tenant for that building, and they have determined that, uh, road improvements are needed to Seward Road to facilitate truck traffic to the building. As you recall from the last meeting, we discussed three phases of improvements related to Fairfield Logistics Center. I showed you an almost identical map. Um, and at that meeting, since that meeting, we've opened up phase two, the roundabout, so that's nearly complete. We also, at the last meeting, council authorized the city to accept five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state grants to build phase three next year. So we're now talking about an additional phase. I'm calling that phase four on the map here. Um, and this project would reconstruct Seward Road on either side, north and south of the Norfolk Southern Rail Crossing to modify the vertical profile, basically creating a gentler approach for larger trucks to traverse it. Um, that improvement is estimated to cost five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, the city has also received state grants towards this project, state grant offers, which total four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The developer, Al-Nair, will contribute fifty-five thousand, leaving the city contribution at around six percent, thirty-two thousand. As part of the project, uh, we would also add wider shoulders to that section of roadway, uh, mimicking the other improved sections of, of Seward Road that we've already completed. If approved, the city would likely complete phases three and four on a similar timeframe next summer. Um, and so the ordinance tonight would authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Al-Nair, um, to undertake these road improvements contingent on that third building moving forward and the state funding coming through. Any questions about that one? That's all I have. Thank you.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathaniel. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Timmer, uh, for Development Services.
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Councilman Davidson?
Thank you. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement and a community reinvestment area school compensation agreement, which will provide property tax incentives for Pacific Manufacturing Ohio Incorporated to include an expansion to its campus by means of renovating and enlarging an existing building on Quality Boulevard and declaring it an emergency. I move to suspend the second and third readings.
We have a motion and a second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion in a section, sec, excuse me, a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second, I have an ordinance authorizing the building superintendent to waive building permit fees in excess of fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars related to the construction of a new facility for Pacific Manufacturing at five fifty Quality Boulevard and declaring an emergency. Move to suspend the second, third readings.
We have a motion and a second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Third, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with A and L Fairfield Land LLC relative to roadway improvements to Seward Road identified as necessary to facilitate construction of a third building in the Fairfield, Fairfield Township Joint Economic Development District and declaring it an emergency. Move to suspend the second, third reading.
We have a motion and a second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Great work, Reagan, Nathaniel.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Public Works, City Manager Timmer.
We have two ordinances tonight for Public Works. The first ordinance authorizes the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute and file an Ohio Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Grant Funding Application and Agreement for the River Road West Multi-Use Trail. This would be the trail connecting Pleasant, uh, the future Pleasant Avenue Multi-Use Trail with the future Great Miami River Trail. ODOT would be funding approximately ninety percent of this grant. The second ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions LLC for updates and upgrades to the municipal building. The primary focus of this upgrade is security enhancement of the municipal building. The relocation of the utility billing area to the north hallway would allow the building to remain, or to become secure in all areas except for the north hallway. You would remain having public access to council chambers, utility billing, and the building division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timmer. Turn it over to Councilmember Leslie Bessel.
Thank you. I have two ordinance, ordinances. The first is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute and file the Ohio Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program Grant Funding Application and Agreement for the River Road West Multi-Use Trail, connecting the Pleasant Avenue Multi-Use Trail to the Great Miami River Trail and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
We have a motion and a second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to, sorry.
Sorry, motion carried.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions LLC for the municipal building security upgrades project and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
We have a motion and a second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to finance and budget. City Manager Timmer.
We have three ordinances tonight for finance and budget. All three ordinances are related to appropriations. The contractual appropriations total five hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and include two projects, one from Public Works and one from Public Utilities. There are two non-contractual appropriation, one totaling seventy-five thousand and one totaling a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. These include one project for the seventy-five thousand and five projects for the hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four for projects from the Development Services, Parks and Recreation, and Public Utilities Departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timmer. Councilmember Tim Myers?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, first item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one sixty-six dash twenty-three entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This time I'd like to make motion to suspend second, third readings, please.
We have a motion and a second for rule suspension. All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, the second ordinance, uh, since we've tabled the, uh, discussion, I can, um, table this, correct?
If you want to make a motion to table this, you can do that.
I'd like to make a motion to table the ordinance to amend ordinance number one sixty-six dash twenty-three entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period of January first, twenty twenty-four, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This is non-contractual appropriations for seventy-five thousand dollars for public art fund grant.
We have a motion and a second for rule, uh, suspension. Excuse me. All in favor?
Actually, a motion and a second to table this.
Motion and second to table this ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The third is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one sixty-six dash twenty-three entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
We have a motion and a second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk, will you please read the meeting schedule?
Monday, November twenty-fifth, council manager briefing, six P M. Regular meeting, seven P M. Monday, December ninth, regular meeting, six P M. Monday, January thirteenth, council manager briefing, six P M. Regular meeting, seven P M.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We will now recess to executive session.